Good morning. I'm Matt Smith, President of the Greater Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce, and I want to welcome you to another in our first Friday speaker series. And we're really pleased to have the guests with us who we have today to join us for this really important discussion and very much looking forward to it. Before I introduce Jen Beer, who is our Vice President of Government Affairs here at the Chamber and will lead the discussion today, I want to welcome Lisa Birmingham, who is the Vice President of External and Government Affairs for Comcast. And Lisa and Comcast have been tremendous partners of our, with us for our first Friday speaker series this year and a great sponsor for the entire year of this series. And we wouldn't be able to do these events without the support of organizations like Comcast in this instance. And so want to just make sure I thank and recognize Lisa and Comcast for their tremendous support of this program. And this time I'll bring up Lisa Birmingham, who, as I said, is Comcast VP of External and Government Affairs. Lisa?
Hey, thanks, Matt. It's been a great partnership and really looking forward to this morning's discussion. We've got a great, the region has a great opportunity in front of us. So of course, I'm a bit partial to these critical infrastructure discussions, partial to discussing broadband infrastructure. We're the region's leading provider of wireline broadband. And we want everyone to have access to the digital economy and digital opportunities. So we want to be part of the solution. And we do that in two ways by expanding access to critical broadband infrastructure and working very hard on adoption, the digital divide of getting people who have access to actually take internet services. So we've been investing in our network throughout the country and 2.4 billion in the Commonwealth just last year and hundreds of millions in southwestern PA. And because of these investments earlier this week, we announced gigabit speeds are now available in our Indiana County and Beaver County systems. Really excited to deliver that high-speed data and Wi-Fi to those areas that includes Marion, Buffington, Montgomery, Monaca, Freedom, Rochester, throughout Indiana and Beaver Counties. And of course, our systems in southwestern PA, Allegheny, Washington, Butler and other parts already have these gigabit speeds. And what was new, what we started rolling out recently in recognition of the multiple devices in people's homes is a new gateway, Advanced Gateway Service, Wi-Fi 6 and X-Play Advance. So it, through the pandemic, I'm sure all of you noticed that you have, most average homes have dozens of connected devices. So our new gateway service enables you to connect up to 100 devices, whether it's your smart refrigerator or your smartphone. So we continue to invest and innovate to ensure that people have the speeds they need, the reliability they need. We're also working on adoption, as I said. And in the past 10 years, when we, starting when we first introduced Internet Essentials, we've connected more than 160,000 individuals in Allegheny County to the internet for the first time. We keep working at it and it's through partnerships with many of you that we're able to improve the adoption, improve the tape rates for families who have not yet connected. So our Internet Essentials program is a broadband program that offers 50 megabits at $10 a month. We're also participating in the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program, which affords families up to $50 a month in a broadband subsidy. So really excited to be doing that. And then one of the most uplifting things that we're able to do is we are standing up lift zones. We have roughly a couple of dozen now in the Greater Pittsburgh region. These lift zones provide free gigabit Wi-Fi in community centers in neighborhoods every day. In fact, we recently announced in Washington County, the Lemoine Center is one of our newest partners. So really excited to be part of the solution for access and adoption of broadband. So, and the final thing I'd say is that I know some of my team is on the call. We're also looking to expand our network. So we know that there are areas that don't have internet and we want to be part of that solution. My team's been working with almost every county in the region and the SPC to share information about our network and our availability. So really excited to be part of the solution and I look forward to this morning's discussion. So thank you, Matt, and thank you commissioners for joining us.
Thank you very much, Lisa. And at this point in time, I just want to set the table for our discussion a little bit. You know, we've talked a lot over the last couple of months and as part of our first Friday series about the opportunity that we have as a region in front of us with, you know, policy changes in Washington, with investment opportunities coming as we think they are coming from the federal level. And you know, Pittsburgh, the Pittsburgh region is so well positioned to be a leader in receiving that investment. We have world shaping technologies here. We're innovating in many, many different areas. We very much sit at the nexus of tech and robotics and energy and advanced manufacturing and so much more. And we have all those assets working for us. And so our argument to policymakers, particularly at the federal level, has been that Pittsburgh is so ripe for that investment because we do have the assets, both on the physical side and the intellectual side, as Lisa mentioned, but the need for 5G and broadband investment and how that will catalyze economic development, support equity and opportunity across the region. We think that Pittsburgh is, the Pittsburgh region is really uniquely positioned for those, those types of projects in both the deferred maintenance context, but even more, I think, you know, future focused, those transformational projects that 25, 30, 35 years from now, our kids and our grandchildren will be talking about as we make the smart strategic decisions at this particular time. The other big advantage that we believe our region has is the collaborative spirit and partnership that we have across the region on the private sector side, but also on the public sector side. And I think today's discussion is a wonderful example of the collaborative spirit that exists across the region from Indiana County to Washington County to Butler County. And our speakers here today, Commissioner Hess, Commissioner Iri Vaughn, and Commissioner Oshie are not only leaders in their respective counties, but they're leaders in our region on transportation and infrastructure issues, on economic development issues. And that's why we're so pleased to have them with us here today. And so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Beer, who is our Vice President of Government Affairs, as I said, here at the Chamber, to lead the discussion and introduce the commissioners and our guests. So Jen, take it away.
Great. Yes, thanks, Matt, and good morning, everyone. It's great to be with everyone this morning and I'm very excited to help moderate a discussion. You know, as Matt said, on two very timely topics for our region, infrastructure and economic development. And you know, as Matt said, we've been very engaged on this issue to help work collaboratively across our region. So that's the discussion that we're looking forward to having this morning. So you know, we have three of our great county commissioners here with us this morning, all of whom, I think Matt just stole, one of my lines I was going to say is not only, they're not only active in their own individual counties, but we know that they're active in the region as a whole. So before I bring them up though, and introduce them each individually and ask them for a few comments and opening remarks, I would be remiss if I didn't highlight two points that sort of connect, I think, all four of us this morning. So first, each of these commissioners serve the region on the Executive Committee of the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission. And I'm happy to note that I was also recently appointed to the SPC, the overall commission by County Executive Fitzgerald. So I'm very much looking forward to serving with the commissioners in that capacity for our region's Metropolitan Planning Organization. And second, though I think it's quite obvious, I think it's fantastic that we've got a panel of all women here this morning with us. So without further ado, I will go maybe alphabetically by county and bring up the commissioners one by one. So first, as Chair of the Butler County Board of Commissioners, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Leslie Oshie. As noted earlier, all the commissioners are on the SPC, but Commissioner Oshie also serves as Vice Chair of the Commission and Chair of the Policy Committee. She is Treasurer for the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania and participates on dozens of other boards and authorities. So Commissioner Oshie, welcome, and the floor is yours if you'd like to offer a few opening remarks.
Good morning, everyone. It is so great to be here today with all of you to talk about infrastructure and economic development in what is certainly a disrupted environment in so many ways. But you know, I rest my faith in Southwest PA's resilience and ability to survive and emerge from any disruption in the past because of the hardworking people in our region, like all of you out there. So I, I just, I know, and I have a lot of faith in who we are. One of the best ways, though, to restore and maintain that stability really is to be prepared to rapidly respond to the forces of change, which is exactly what the Southwest PA Commission spent a lot of time working on in their long-range plan. And so one thing that I will always reinforce and that I maybe sometimes preach about is I don't like to reinvent a wheel. The Commission spent nearly a year developing smart moves for a changing region, which is a long-range plan that involved hundreds of individuals and leaders in the community participating in that plan. It was a collective vision and I think it remains the same today as it did before COVID. And so I want to take just a moment to remind, if you don't mind, to remind some of you and maybe introduce others to what that vision was and is. And that vision is a world-class, well-maintained, integrated transportation system that provides connected mobility for all, enables resilient communities and supports a globally competitive economy. And what that means is it means taking advantage of our existing assets. As Matt talked about there a little bit, you know, even the maintenance and the deferred maintenance on our roadways, that is critically important, even our, you know, even, even those who are testing the autonomous vehicle said to us, we don't necessarily need bells and whistles, we just need to know that our roadways are well-maintained and safe. But it means also investing in regionally connected and seamless public transportation. That includes new transit investments in key corridors. It means developing modern support infrastructure that prepares the region for current technologies and advances us, but also strives to put the region years ahead and decades ahead, again, as Matt said, by developing the next technology here in the region. It means that we have to tackle climate change and take care of our air and water. And I note that that has a very broad definition and we have to stop thinking about this so narrowly because we're already doing it. And I think that that's been a focus since I was in fourth grade and that was a long time ago. So it means that we are working with partners, as we talked about in collaboration and identifying various funding mechanisms and we need to make that happen. We need everybody at the table. We have to have skin in the game and cash on the table. It focuses on our workforce, the needs in the region, attracting and growing that workforce and having people want to come to this region and stay, focusing on technology and innovation. It means being able to innovate in ways, even in new farming techniques and technology. And, and obviously, it, as, as was mentioned, means connecting people through broadband. And that is something, again, that the SPC is, is focused on. It means stewardship and care of communities and our communities that have long been the foundation of this region and focusing on investing in them and bringing them back and making them resilient. So we don't need to rethink this, really. We already did it. We did it before COVID. COVID simply shined a greater light on this plan and then the needs of this region and the opportunities that we have here. And we just need to reinforce that for our resilience. And as for Butler County, that means here we're working with our municipalities, especially on plans that are ready for investment and working to leverage financial opportunities together with those municipalities to get those projects done. And we can scale that to the regional level. So we need everyone at the table and we look forward to working with all of you in getting this ready and with my, my wonderful colleagues, Diana and Shereen and the rest on the commission and all of you here to get that done because SPC Ready is ready. And I think, Matt, next is now. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Next up, I'd like to welcome Indiana County Commissioner Shereen Hess, again, also serving on the regional SPC. But Commissioner Hess also heads up an initiative that established the Indiana County Sustainable Economic Development Task Force, an area I know she's very passionate about and that we hope to talk a little bit about later. She served as President of the League of Women Voters for 14 years and also sits on many, many boards and authorities. So Commissioner Hess, please feel free to unmute and share some of your opening remarks.
Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you, Jen, for the introduction. And thank you to the Pittsburgh Chamber for this warm invitation to participate on this panel. I always welcome an opportunity to connect with the wider region. As a county, we're quite rural in nature. And even though we're the center of Western Pennsylvania, geographically speaking, we sometimes feel like we're out there on the, on the edge, in the margins. So it's just great to be able to connect to this wider region economically, geographically, culturally, financially, in all sorts of ways. You know, Indiana County is a beautiful, special place, like all of our counties. We're located in these beautiful foothills of the Allegheny Mountains, like others, where a land of rolling hills and streams. All of our waters are so important to us. We're known as the Christmas tree capital of the world. We supply over a million trees annually to markets nationwide. Our history in Indiana County is linked to our abundant natural resources and agricultural production. Both play a major role in our culture and in our economy here. And in recent decades, we've capitalized on light manufacturing, higher education and banking. And these industries, as well as our extractive and our other energy-related ones, contribute to a fairly diverse base of economic development, though we, you know, we recognize that our natural resource industries are quite vulnerable, as they are in many places. So we acknowledge that the economy is a changing one and we need to prepare our workforce to effectively transition and we are doing that. I think all three of the commissioners on the panel today sit on our workforce investment boards. So we are confronting all these issues head-on, workforce development, economic development, citizen engagement. We know that we've got to work on education and workforce and through STEM and building those essential skillsets in our young people. We used to call them soft skills, but I, I push to call them essential skills because that's what they really are. You can teach technical in the workplace, but you can, it's very difficult to teach the, how to collaborate and how to, to hold a conversation and be culturally sensitive on the job. So we're constantly working on those kinds of things. We know, we know that's where the future is too. One of our large projects now in Indiana County, we're really proud of, is the building of the Westmoreland County Community Satellite in Indiana County, the Community College, along with the Challenger Learning Center, all to be shared on the same campus with our Technology Center, combined with the fact that we have our new Conservation District headquarters in that same campus. We have, we are establishing a powerful continuum of STEM learning. We've, as a county, have made a commitment to about $3 million of this nearly $8 million project and we're very excited about that. So we talked about collaboration and how important and how well we do it in Western Pennsylvania. And in Indiana County, we're no different. We have a, the Center for Economic Operations, where we, our Development Corporation, our tourist bureau, our Indiana University of Pennsylvania and our Chamber of Commerce and the county all work very closely together and we have to. We know that we alone cannot do any of these things. So we know that the peculiarities of rural areas make traditional economic development a challenge. It's difficult to recruit. And still, we were able to bring in Urban Outfitters Distribution Center, many thanks to our state legislative team and many, many other partners. And as Jen mentioned, we have our Sustainable Economic Development Task Force, which is a very much a bottom-up approach to very community involved. We were very proud of this, a very participatory environment where we talked all about how can we be part of and capitalize on the renewable energy economy and sustainable agriculture and building with sustainable materials and environmental stewardship as a way of driving tourism and outdoor recreation opportunities. So as I mentioned, we're always eager to, to connect with our city friends and in our urban areas. I think sometimes people have some myths about rural and what rural people are, what we, what we represent. And we want people to know that when, when you invest in rural areas, we do better and that helps everybody do better. We're, we're rich in natural history and resources and environmental assets and cultural opportunities. But you know, we have many, many challenges. But I, I, so I share what it's, what it means to have strong economies because we are the place that produces our food, our fuel and our fiber and rural voices are essential. And I'm so glad, you know, we're all very glad that American Rescue Plan is acknowledging that investment is so crucial. So I just want to leave with a couple of thoughts. When we invest in rural, we not only help our, you know, help people, but hopefully we're going to stop incubating the political alienations, the resentments, the racial divisions, you know, these big, big issues that we are all kind of confronting, as well as our, our local, local issues. And let us get to solving the enormously costly economic and social problems that have escalated. So I think our region's future is challenging, but bright. And so I look forward to this discussion today to lifting all boats with this rising tide. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Very well said. And okay, finally, last but not least, I'd like to welcome Chair of the Washington County Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Diana Iri Vaughn. Similar to her colleagues, the list of boards and authorities and memberships is long, but just to highlight a few key positions, she is on the board of the Washington County Chamber of Commerce, so with our friend Jeff Cottula. She's a member of the Washington County Opiate Task Force and an area that I know she is passionate about, she is part of the Women's Mentoring Project of the South Point CEO Association. And also, again, a member of the Executive Committee of the SPC. So Commissioner Iri Vaughn, please feel free to offer some opening remarks and thanks for joining us.
Good morning and thank you for having us on for your first Fridays today. We appreciate the opportunity to share what's going on in our counties throughout southwestern Pennsylvania. And I think you, you chose a good mix of counties and projects that we're working on to come together to discuss our plans for the future for the region. As we all know, economic development, transportation doesn't stop at our county borders, although we're elected to serve our counties, we must work together so we can all benefit. People shop in every county, people have jobs living in one county, coming to the next. And you know, our transportation goes through everything. So all of these issues are something that we, we have to work together on because no one succeeds without the next county succeeding. I've been a commissioner for now 28 years in Washington County, a very long time, so I've seen a lot of change. SPC, in addition, has changed. When I first served on the commission back in 1996, I co-chaired the Alcoa Project, turning that building into the Regional Renaissance Tower, which we no longer own. However, we saw different issues back then than we do today here in this region. And as Commissioner Oshie stated, you know, our resiliency to change is something that I've seen, you know, throughout these decades. And I'm so proud of this region for being able to be flexible enough, you know, and astute enough to notice what's going on and be able to address new issues as they're always changing. Washington County has changed tremendously with South Point 1, South Point 2. We've gone from really being more of a rural county to be a rural, urban mix county. And we've benefited from having pad-ready sites and the energy industry, which we consider ourselves the energy capital of the East here in Washington County, because we're usually number one or number two for active wells in all of Pennsylvania. And with that has come a lot of opportunity. It's come, it's brought opportunity for our residents to have much higher median-paying jobs than other areas of the state and nation. It's allowed family wealth building here, investments and upgrades in our farming and agricultural communities. So we've really had a benefit of the energy resources that are here right under our feet. Transportation is the key for any economic development opportunity. And that's why SPC is so essential to our region, which is why it's the Metropolitan Planning Organization federally designated, as most of you would know. And working together, so SPC's really brought the commissioners to a point where we're working together very, very well. SPC has evolved. I'm so grateful that they're working on all sorts of transportation projects, different uses, and that they have stepped into more of an economic development role as well because transportation drives economic development. We realize Washington County has changed and all of our counties have changed with the pandemic that we're just coming out of. We know that economic development is going to be different. We've seen that we have, are going to have more flexibility with the workforce, with individuals having more opportunities to work remotely. We've been able to make that happen and be productive, although some will, will fight the fight that they're not quite as productive as when they're working in an office building. But we have to change because we don't know what the office building structures are really going to look like yet. I think that we're not going to know for another year or so until we see what evolves, you know, in those industrial parks. We know what our vacancy rates are, but we know that our developers do feel very positive about the future that we have. And so we'll work together. I'm glad that you brought us all together today so we can answer questions about what we're working on now currently in our particular counties. This just gives us one more opportunity to find our synergies so we can move productively forward together.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, well, if all three of you would like to unmute and we'll sort of start a discussion together, I'll kick it off. I have a, a question or two that I'll kick it off with, and I know we've already started to get a few Q and A's in the chat. And just a reminder to our attendees that if you do have a question or an issue you'd like me to raise or ask, please do put it in the Q and A at the bottom of your Zoom. But let me start the discussion. We talked a lot about investment opportunities that are in front of us, particularly at the federal level, right? We have a lot of the federal COVID relief dollars that are coming our way, as well as we, I think we all noted, the potential additional investment from the federal government for infrastructure. So can we talk a little bit about how each of you are viewing these opportunities for your county? If there are any plans that, you know, you can talk about around how you intend to deploy funds or how you might be looking at projects or opportunities in a new light because of what we sort of see in front of us here? So how about, we'll go sort of backwards. Commissioner Iri Vaughn, would you like to take the first crack at that?
Absolutely. While we are still in the development phase of our plan, we as a board in Washington County have discussed some of our priorities. And the first is going to be broadband. But Washington County, I want to say, we, when we got the CARES Act funding, we made broadband a priority then. We spent about $300,000 of our roughly 18 million and we got into over 3,000 households, plus had some community hotspots provided because education is so very important. And we found that not only in education, but we had a lot of workers who were trying to work remotely that were in desperate need. So broadband will continue to be a priority. We have found that we have 11 providers of broadband currently working in our county. So we have started to schedule meetings with each of them to see what their interest is. We know that, especially in our rural areas, and I'm, I'm sure Commissioner Hess already knows this, that, you know, they don't, we don't always get the providers wanting to come in because the, you know, the cost benefit isn't as high. So we're, we know we have to be flexible with how we determine. So we're, we know we have to be flexible with how we determine how much money goes into specific areas. But because we may have to provide greater investment. So broadband's number one. We're also looking at number two, I think everyone is corrections, because corrections were such an issue um with the pandemic. And we're hoping and we think that we can fit an expansion. We're we're looking at potentially purchasing a hotel that can be uh reworked for weekend or in work release inmates. So we can have social distancing, so we don't have threat of bringing in um infectious disease in the future. While we can still provide community services. So we're looking at that, uh, we're looking at air purification systems. We all have courthouses that are very, very old that have, um, I'm going to say somewhat of an environmental issue. So we're looking at air purification systems that can allow a healthier work environment. And we believe so that that will fit into the regs. We are um looking at the way we redesign office space. So that there's more um privacy, um, more walls. So that we can allow in the future, if we would have infectious disease or something else that comes back. You know, we can continue to work uh in our headquarters because government functions are essential. And although we made it work, working remotely, we realize that it's better when you have everyone uh in the office. We are looking at uh what it means to public safety, what upgrades do we, do we need to provide to public safety? Uh, through all of this, and we're looking at transportation as well. You know, most of us have our own transportation authorities in our county, so we're looking at what that means. Because we did have to sus- suspend a lot of public transportation to essential appointments only. So we're looking at what can we do to um provide for transportation? What will that look like? Re-outfitting, you know, the buses or smaller vehicles, how can we do this? So we're looking at all of those potentials right now. And we've started developing a little bit of a plan, but the first, of course, for us, priority is going to be broadband.
Yeah, great, great. Commissioner Hess.
Thank you. Uh, broadband is definitely on our list. And we invested quite a bit of our CARES Act last year into um starting a a broadband into our more rural areas, more remote areas. And you know, what made it so successful was we were ready to go. You know, we talked about how, we had held a press conference last week. Talked about how the many partners have worked for years, literally years and years and years, to bring us to a point where we were ready to go like that. And we invested about two and a half million last year and will do so again these, in these next few years. Um, but very happy to get um fiber and wireless networks built through areas where previously internet speeds were less than three M uh BPS. And I'm learning all the new lingo about broadband and wifi. But this is a fiber network that increased um access to at least seven hundred and fifty homes. And and met our our two hundred businesses and three school districts. That's really big for a county like Indiana. So we're very excited about doing more of that. And like Commissioner Iri Vaughn said, we we don't have our our plans sort of set in stone, obviously. But, you know, we want to work on workforce. We know we need to promote all the training opportunities that are starting to emerge. Um, especially for folks who who don't, who are in that middle, they don't, um, they have more than the uh after, you know, high school education. But less than the college degree, so many opportunities there. And um, we want to, we want to address food insecurity. As we all probably know, the the um pandemic laid bare, how how really not connected our food pantries and our, and those um, our resources uh are are in our our very rural county. It's not, uh, for lack of of trying, because we have so many great agencies and and our human services are just far none. But we really saw how how much that's needed. We want to address childcare. That is a real important issue for getting people back to work. We know that a lot of women had to leave the workforce. And that is a, that's a direct impact to our ability to compete um regionally, globally, et cetera. So that's an important thing to us. Our airport, um, we have a, um, it's not a commercial, we don't do commercial airlines. Obviously, we're just a small county airport, but it's another tool in our toolbox, being in a very rural area to prop up, so to speak, that that um piece of uh infrastructure that that's very important for us. And of course, the typical water and sewer projects, you know, in a rural county, we still have lots of malfunctioning sewer sewer systems, onlot systems. So we uh we're very intent on addressing all of those issues. And, you know, really just improving quality of life, making investments that will hopefully last through the generations. We never, we don't want to use this money to fill a budget hole. Um, and I know we all know that uh the devil's in the details on how it gets done, but hoping to bring equity. Bring citizen involvement like we've never seen before. Last year, we had to spend money fast. This, this time, we have some, a real opportunity to be thoughtful and careful and um bring equity to to this arena. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. And Commissioner Oshie.
Thanks, Jen. Um, I would echo, I think it it uh without having to repeat all of the things that Commissioner Iri Vaughn and Commissioner Hess uh said, those are certainly all the same things that Butler County is concerned about. But our approach, I guess, to knowing what these opportunities are are in front of us is sort of twofold. I mean, one is throughout COVID and even before COVID. Um, we spent a lot of time uh working with our municipalities. We did multiple municipal tours, bringing them together. You know, having discussions about the needs across the county, which are very different in Butler County. I mean, if you, you could almost draw a line through Butler County and the, you know, the south, southern part of our county is very much developing and growing. And um, uh, just really booming this, the northern part is beautiful. It is very rural. Um, people like it that way. They love it where they're at. Uh, but that also presents those water and sewer and other types of challenges, as you, as you explained. So we have a twofold approach and throughout the, um, throughout COVID, we began meeting with our municipalities on a regular basis. We have Zoom calls on a regular basis, bringing them together and providing tools for them. Um, as we have in the past to leverage funding. Butler County has an infrastructure bank that we used our Act thirteen uh impact fee money to fund. Uh, and has been able to fund millions of dollars worth of projects in Butler County for municipalities, small and large. Because they come together in a borrowing pool and are able to borrow. And we are um offsetting the cost of that interest. So um, they have been able to complete some pretty important but infrastructure projects as a result of those funds. We want to keep those types of things going and know that we can continue that investment into the future and bringing them to the table. Um, one of the most important things that just happened there was those municipalities came together. Uh, and on a stormwater project, particularly in the southwest corner of the county, they came together, did a um, a study on the stormwater issues uh in the Connequenesing um creek and the Connequenesing uh watershed. And they have come up with a complete list of plans. We just are in the process of um reducing release rates collectively. And then uh they have an entire list of projects that really could um are ready for investment. Um, and they're there and they are defined and we know how much they're going to cost. So the plan is there and ready, and those are some of the things that we can look at investing in and but we, but the most important thing is that we will work with those municipalities to leverage all the various resources that we have to make those those types of projects happen. So we do have those on our plate. The second part of this is that we intend to um convene next month. Um, a group of not only our growth collaborative, which I guess we would call similar to to Allegheny County's Allegheny Conference, uh, our growth collaborative, along with our school district superintendents, human services, a hospital. Um, to not only debrief about COVID, but then to begin to plan for how to invest the dollars that are available. Because as we all know, um, as you point out with childcare, um, when you push a button in one place or when you, when you make a change in one place, it has a very cyclical effect, you know, all the way around the block, whether it's our you know, in our schools, our hospital, or, you know, our healthcare, our human services, uh, they, you know, uh the prison as and and the criminal justice system is uh Commissioner Iri Vaughn referred to. I mean, when you, when you do one thing here, it has effects everywhere else. So we want to make sure that we're leveraging those dollars appropriately. So we'll be convening that group. Um, and and again, throughout this entire uh time for the last year, every Monday, we've had calls, collective calls with our school districts and human services and aging, you know, just trying to keep up to date on what's happening with everyone. Particularly around food security and making sure children are getting fed, making sure issues are getting addressed in the aging world. Um, so and and working with the advice of our health system. So, you know, we will take that two-pronged approach. And then I think that, you know, a lot of the work we've done in the county on the two twenty eight corridor um, really highlighted again, you know, how we were able to bring forty million dollars of, you know, federal money in uh, to leverage the 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 regional dollars um in order to complete a very important corridor project. It's not exactly done. Uh, we still have a ways to go. But um, the important piece of that was that we were able to use not only our infrastructure bank to leverage that, but our local use fees. Uh, we passed those local use fees um a couple of years ago. It wasn't popular. Um, but we did it and it helped us bring money to the table uh in order to leverage those dollars. Along with municipalities who were willing to put that skin in a game. So again, you know, we're hoping to share that same, you know, approach with the rest of the region and figure out, you know, how we can collectively uh get all those things done.
Great. Thank, thank you all. And I was going to uh go to one more of my own questions. But we actually have some really great questions in the chat, and I know a couple of you hit on some of them already. And so, um, Commissioner Oshie, since you sort of were starting down the road of uh what your county's doing around some of the social service programs. Um, I do have a question from Adagio Health, but um I will, I will ask the other two commissioners. And also, obviously, uh, feel free to jump in again, Commissioner Oshie. But what are the greatest needs that the commissioners seeing, are seeing in their respective counties and across the region when it comes to health, wellness and social services? So obviously, um, you know, clearly it's a pandemic, um, you know, a lot of greater needs, I'm sure, coming out of of those programs. So, um, Commissioner Hess, did you want to uh comment on anything there?
Um, so the question about um social needs is very, yeah, it all affects and Commissioner Oshie said it real well, it all is a part of its own system. Uh, we're concerned about mental health, the domestic violence issues that um increase child welfare. Um, oh, any number, the aging ish issues with aging, we have a very high um age population. And we know that people, there's a lot of vaccine hesitancy and that uh has a direct impact on our our workforce issues too. Uh, I think I read a statistic that um a large percentage of people benefit more from staying out of the workforce right now. Uh, than than they do by being in it. And a lot of that has to do with being nervous and child about the, about the pandemic and childcare. And all those, you know, those kind of issues that that affect families in ways that sometimes we don't understand. Um, you know, we have a lot of flexibility in our own, uh, our own kind of work situations, but a lot of people don't. So yes, we're, uh, those are all, um, I think that it is ju- jump-started us in a great way to figure out how we are going to help people figure out, you know, where, how they can avail themselves of of all the different things that can be available to help them get back to where. It's very much a collaborative government and business and, um, you know, social services.
Thank you. Commissioner Iri Vaughn, anything from Washington?
Oh, absolutely. So what we saw in Washington County was behavioral health issues were definitely up. Especially in senior citizens, a lot of senior citizens who were secluded, um, needed medications as they haven't before. So that numbers up. We also saw the severity of child abuse um has increased. Not just the number, which has, but the severity as well, especially in the beginning of the pandemic. Because mandated reporters suddenly weren't around these children. And so that's a focus. Um, substance use disorder is also up because of the pandemic and the um seclusion that these folks have experienced. Although it's great to have the virtual platforms to connect with people. It's just not the same as person-to-person in the same-room connection. So that population um really took a hit as well. We were already in the process, going down the road, we'd hired a new human services director. And we were putting together a plan which would be more of health and human services with a single point of entry, single point of exit for both the criminal and non-criminal aspect of all of human services with overlaps. We um have the design. We're hoping to start implementation within the next two months. Uh, we're trying to just finalize how we bring and fund this plan through some existing positions. But we're going to have care managers, because what we've seen in the past and and was even more pronounced during the pandemic was the fact that you've got to treat the, all of the issues within that family for a greater chance of success. And we're implementing uh tracking mechanisms so we can see the success rates with providers and all the services that are being mandated by the courts and that are being suggested with our, our departments. So human services i- is an area that we all have to look at. And it, when you consider the fact that in most of our counties, it's roughly about one-third of our budget, it's really important. Uh, the health side of it, as uh some of you may have heard in the news, seven counties in this region have discussed the challenges that we've had um with the Department of Health throughout the pandemic. We will be us shortly sending a letter, we were still in the collection phase, a collective letter to the Department of Health with the issues that we in our counties had with the way this was handled. Not just the issues, but recommendations on how they could improve service, working together with us in the future. So that was our first step at looking more at the health aspect for the outlined counties. And so we'll see if they are open to discussions and working with us in the future. And then we'll see potentially what our next steps might be. But health and human services have been really highlighted during this pandemic.
Yeah. Commissioner Oshie, did you, you touched on it before, just wanted to make sure anything to add?
Well, I, you know, I think first of all, you know, we have, you know, there's a lot of discussion now around social determinants of health and, you know, being able to incorporate those. And and um, I I think we've done a really good job of that already in Butler County through the years in our collaborative effort here. Um, but but what I think concerns me right now, um, more than anything is, you know, we know all those needs exist. We know they're all there. We know they were all, uh, as as both commissioners mentioned, highlighted. But the workforce issues in human services are frightening. Um, you know, and it and it and it plays out into the community also in uh, in law enforcement and police response to to calls that are related to, you know, this is the big, you know, obviously big spotlight on this now. But calls that are related to uh mental health and um and behavioral health and as well as even in the um in the ID world and intellectual disabilities world. Because you have community homes, you know, throughout our counties and communities where they're, I think, struggling to staff. And um, when that happens, you know, there are behaviors and things that occur. And again, um, now we're detracting police response to to deal with things that are not necessarily in their wheelhouse. So we, I I have, um, I I have a benefit of not only being the parent of a police officer uh who responds to these types of calls, but I come out of United Way world, you know, where we were also collaborative in in bringing three united ways together to make a regional United Way. Um, but you know, the, I am, I am right now very concerned about, um, you know, how, how we will invest to make sure that uh the staff is there. Because clearly the salaries for those who work in those fields of taking care of our, our people who need the most care are are not probably where they should be. And those challenges that you see that are related to childcare, you know, and and others that we talk about relate directly back to that. So I wonder where we're headed, you know, when we're trying to recruit people and when we can't even get lifeguards to open a pool, you know, I wonder where we're headed in in, as we see these, these workforce challenges. You know, we we, um, it it's a, it's a, it's a big thing and it's a, it's a part of that human services. And that's why I speak about, you know, about that and the importance of stable funding. And that is our message to, you know, lawmakers in Harrisburg right now is the stability of of mental health funding and and funding for behavioral health.
Great. Now, that's, that's all. Great. No, that's, that's all great points. And you all hit on different aspects of workforce that I was going to bring together. And I think it all sort of culminates in another question I was going to ask around economic competitiveness and how we as a region need to be competitive moving forward. And that includes things like workforce that I think you all touched on, which includes things like childcare. There was a question on childcare, so we can talk a little bit more about that. But really getting to the crux of making sure that we have an inclusive economical growth for all of our region. And so maybe if we could just sort of pivot for just a second, we can, we can sort of combine all of those things. Cause we know that in order to be competitive economically, we have to have a strong workforce, which includes, you know, abundant childcare, abundant social services. But in terms of sort of the, the jobs and where we are in terms of our economy, I know, I know we talked a little bit a few days ago about some of the work that you all are doing. And maybe Commissioner Irvon, if I could start with you, I know you've done a lot in Washington, even incorporating the Secretary of DCED, Secretary Davin and some of your work. Do you want to talk a little bit about some of the, the programs and work going on down there?
Absolutely. I'm glad you asked this question, whoever's asking about all this. I started convening economic development summits. I started with our major developers in the county who have invested hundreds of millions of dollars building buildings, recruiting businesses. So I started with them. Secretary Davin has been a facilitator, has been tremendously helpful to us. And I brought them together and I said, what are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? What's the vision? What's a new economy? What do you expect in office space? And what action items do we need to take? So we have a list of action items that have come out of those discussions. And so the first was with developers and I will tell you that we had to segue with the developers. They had a part B that dealt specifically with job training and education, which we brought in our workforce investment director. And we brought in some of the trades to present what's going on. The other was transportation. SPC came. Our regional transportation authority came. And then we're in the middle of updating our county comprehensive plan. So with that comprehensive plan, we had them at that portion with developers. We're coming back together June 15th. Once again, Secretary Davin will facilitate this for us. And we're going to be putting together a new structure for economic development that hits on all of the action items that were brought up, ideas that were brought up during the summits. The small business one was great. Couple of things that we're working on now. We have tasked our workforce investment group to put together a comprehensive job training, education, resource guide for our county, something we do not have. And we want it to be on a website. We also want it to be available in an app. We also want to have job post listing available in an app, because the new generation, they don't go to websites, they go to apps. So the younger workforce is going to be critical. So we have to adapt to allow them opportunities by using an app. So that was another thing. We're looking at, you know, our tourism industry, because tourism is so very important. What are our goals? What are our objectives? But I'm so excited about the fact that we have the individuals who are bringing businesses to our counties so invested that, you know, they're willing to kind of reorganize everything that we're doing. We've compiled lists of all of our economic development partners in our county and some in our region that play a key role and identified all the tasks that they are charged with. And then we're going to see what makes sense, because most counties do have a bit of overlap when it comes to economic development. And, you know, so we just have to bring everything together, but we're working very hard on that. I'm really excited about it. The one component we haven't got to yet, because we've been so busy with the developers and now the small businesses, we're going to also tackle our distressed communities. So they will be another component of economic development that we address. But since we're in the middle of updating our comprehensive plan, the folks that are doing that for us are going to be at the June 15th meeting. And all of these plans are going to be incorporated into, to the new county comprehensive plan, because economic development has to be a part of it, in addition to transportation and infrastructure.
That's great. That's exciting. That's great. Commissioner Hess, you know, we noted earlier that you are on the Indiana County Sustainable Development Task Force. Do you want to talk a little bit about how, how that incorporates into, you know, our overall competitiveness as a region and sort of what you're doing in Indiana around that?
Sure. You know, that started out as a group of citizens and citizen-based groups who really just wanted to, to know, how can we bring, how can we avail ourselves of this new economy, the clean energy economy? Being a leader in energy is all of our southwestern Pennsylvania is, we know that there's this transition happening. We want to be respectful of what's happened, but also figure out how we can avail ourselves of these new things. So these, these citizens really pushed us, you know, the, the elected officials to establish this task force. And I'm, and I'm really glad we did. And we, we've got, we've put some resources into it and we've, you know, it's like anything, baby steps. So we talk about, a lot about resilience and how can we build that resiliency? We talk about what are the assets we have in our county and those natural resources and, and our ability. We developed a solar cooperative, which was really, really fantastic. It brought a lot of people in, into discussions. And this was a very diverse group of people, you know, we had all, we had folks from our chamber. We had our elected state officials. We had people from the coal industry, people from the gas and oil industry, people from the environmental industry, architects and our educational institutions. So the strength of it was in its diversity. So we need to just, you know, that, it's a model. It's a good model. We, we took from, you know, I, I'm loving what I'm hearing from my colleagues, because I'm thinking, yeah, I'm glad we're, we're on that path. And, and I'm going to talk later with you all about some of those things you're doing. But it, it takes, it's, it's like everything. Everything needs to be on the table. So we're, you know, we're looking forward and, and be, bringing people into this process is so critical. If people don't feel like they're part of the process, that's what's been happening over the last number of decades. They tend to, to leave, whether figuratively or literally, and we have to stop that. We have to do everything we can to keep people here. And that means involving them in the process.
Absolutely right. And Commissioner Oshie, you know, I know when we talked about this the other day, you, you talked about how COVID really magnified some of the issues around our competitiveness. I know you mentioned a whole host of things, mobility for people, for goods, but anything in particular from, from Butler's perspective, you'd like to touch on in terms of the, the economic competitiveness moving forward?
Well, just so we don't lose this thought, you know, one of the, one of the things that we talked about the other day when we were prepping for this is, is supply chain. And so that was, you know, a, a critical, we pointed out, obviously weaknesses in the supply, supply chain. And, you know, McKinsey did an interesting study early on that talked about that and how COVID would change the way we think about, you know, regional supply chain and how important our current businesses in this, in this region are, you know, and how we have to make sure that our businesses that are here are solid and connected. And, and, and again, we keep saying this is all about smart connections and making connections. And, and, and that applies to, you know, supply chain as well and figuring out how we can be sustainable within, in, in and of ourselves. All that said, it goes back to workforce again, which was a problem prior to, you know, COVID. You know, we knew this was coming. We've been talking about it and addressing it. And I think, you know, from our perspective, we also, you know, we have been engaged and, and trying to drive forward. And it's been a little bit of a challenge with COVID, but an empowerment initiative and working with a, a group out of Minneapolis, actually called Twin Cities Rise. And I can tell you a lot more about it, but if I were you, I'd look that up. And that was a gentleman who started that organization, who left the, or left General Foods to start this nonprofit. And they worked originally with African-American men, trying to help them get jobs and raise them out of poverty situations, but realized that in, in training job skills, they were missing something really important. And that was this personal empowerment concept, which is sort of a cross between, I guess, cognitive behavioral therapy and sort of the emotional intelligence. And so we actually had started training trainers in our community to deliver on those types of programs. It's now been done in the, in an elementary level. So where there's a youth empowerment module and we want to, you know, try to continue to drive that forward and combining that, because I think the issue here is that we aren't building ladders for people effectively. You know, when we talk about rising, you know, giving everybody an opportunity and making sure those opportunities are there, we all have to start someplace. And we start oftentimes in those industries that suffered most in COVID. So in our restaurants and our service industries, you know, and, and the, we, we recognize that wage is a challenge there. But I think we have to figure out how that becomes a critical stepping stone for the next step up and for our manufacturing and everything else. So those are, those are things that I think we have to be focused on is how do we build those ladders for folks? How do we make sure that education and, and technical skill, all the skills that, you know, are there and available. And we are so rich in educational opportunities here in this region. And I think it's just a matter of, you know, connecting all those dots and building a path for, for people to get there. And with all of those supports, again, around social determinants of health, so that they can go and get that job and, and be successful in whatever area they want to be, with or without a, a four-year degree. It can be certificates. And we have proven at time and time again, again, that we, in this region, you know, we were built on steel, for heaven's sakes. And we still should be cognizant of that. And, you know, the things of recent and things in the news, you know, we have one of, we here in Butler have one of the, you know, last remaining steel plants, I think, in the, in the, in the region. And we're fighting, you know, to make sure that that electrical steel is, it remains important for us and nationally as part of national security in our grid. So these are, you know, these are, and, and that the workforce is going to be there for them to maintain as well. So these are tough issues that we're going to face as we go forward. But I'm confident that together, we're going to, we're going to keep, keep working on it.
Absolutely.
And can I jump in to answer a question? Somebody put up about elder care.
Okay.
Because we really didn't touch on that. I mentioned how the senior population was affected, especially with behavioral health issues. But one of the things we changed under human services during the pandemic, one of the first things we did, we started, we had to suspend congregate meals, which have now been reinstated at our senior centers. But we started a grab and go program and then we did food deliveries. We had opportunities for individuals to sign up that were in that senior population to, to have food deliveries, because that's really important. And our area of the state, our funding is in jeopardy of being reduced. You know, they, the original conversation was up to 40%. They're not going to do anything that drastic, because there's a cap on what they can reduce our funding by. But we have seen an increase in elder abuse and, and food insecurity for seniors. So we are planning to meet those needs. I think all of our counties are probably experiencing this as well, because the social deterrents have increased. But we are working on plans to address the needs in our elder community, which are continuing to grow.
Thank you. I know there were a ton of other questions that, that came in and I do apologize to folks. This was such a great conversation. We probably could have gone on for another half hour, hour. So any two-second final comments from all of you? I don't want to cut anybody else off. Any final? Okay. Well, thank you so much, commissioners. This was great. Hopefully maybe we can bring you back for another conversation soon. Thank you to everybody, all of our attendees who, who tuned in and listened today. Thank you to Comcast very much for hosting our, our speaker series, our first Friday series. And just one final note for next month, we will be on July 9th because of the July 4th holiday. So please tune in on July 9th for our next first Friday with City of Pittsburgh Controller, Michael Lamb. So again, thank you all very much and I hope everyone has a great weekend.
Thank you all.